You got X in this leg and X in that leg.
Welcome to the back pain here.
Alright, hey.
Keep my back up here.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
You want the long one, you want the short one or the long one?
The short.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Take care.
I'm gonna have to look here.
Oh, 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 yes.
Right.
Oh, okay.
No, no, no.
He's shooting his mouth off.
How about that?
He does the six.
Huh?
What did he say?
Four forty-five.
Five.
Four forty-five, hey?
Oh. Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
You know, usually you go, so you go, you're going on, so it's not a matter of, so it's not like just a hat. So, I don't think it's something about him, but, so, yeah. It was really sad if you, I used to, it was like, I was drunk, I didn't even get up to do that. Yes. Yeah.
He retired or he was off for the job?
I think he was. No, no, I think he was retired.
You know his name?
Fred. Fred.
Fred, uh.
Ister.
James Ford.
Okay. Fred Ister.
Seriously, you wanna do an invocation for that man?
Master.
Food, huh?
Yes, she worked at school.
He's done. He's like Mr. Stan.
That is good, that is good.
So you guys will just be surprised to hear our call.
Do I know?
I know. That's it? No. Okay, I think that. Will you do the, uh, take over the reins to do special business?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Is that your pen?
Probably is.
I've got a couple of them.
You wanna come over?
No, you don't have.
Again, give me a fifty-eight. We got two minutes.
Yeah, I saw that one.
It's a counting clock.
I know. I'm gonna get ninety-nine, but I'm ninety-eight, but hey.
He's expecting it.
I had a few years. I had. I could, and I saw that day, so I'm glad it was, but it's nice, it's a good call. I had it one time when I was in eighth grade. Thanks for coming up. We, we, we can keep it on. To me, I don't see why we can't do that, I mean, half and half, even with half of us, we're not gonna win. Because the bottom line is, it doesn't matter so much, to sit there and try to achieve a bottom line.
We have thirty-six.
Step one four. Hey, come on in. What's his name again?
Fiona?
It's not him. I said this last time, you can't. You guys ready?
Good evening, the Monday, September tenth, the common council meeting is now in session. Our invocation, uh, our pastor is not here, and we'll, uh, turn over to our sub-pastor, uh, Oliver Davis.
Good evening, let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you so much for being here. We ask you for your wisdom, that you promised us in the book of James, verse one, that you said that you, we ask and you will provide us wisdom, so we ask tonight. Continue to bless our mayor, continue to bless him and all of his leadership and executive leadership. Bless our council, thank you for our president, um, President Scott, and bless all of our council members, thank you for our attorney and our clerk. We ask for a special prayer for, um, Fred Ister's family, our police officer who passed away. Continue to guide his family, bless all those in the community who are dealing with loss. And guide us all, and continue to strengthen the city of South Bend, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
For the leaders to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
You may be seated. If you won't, please turn your cell phones to silent. Clerk Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Preston, here. Councilmember McBride, present. Councilmember Rosen, here. Councilmember Testa, here. Vice President Davis, present. Councilmember Gordy, it's you. Councilmember Furley, here. Councilmember White, present. President Scott.
Present. Thank you, report on subcommittee minutes, please.
Report of subcommittee on minutes. To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has expected the Minnesota, August twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, meeting of the council and found them to be correct, therefore we recommend the same be approved.
Watch your mouth, bro. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Ms. Fowler, uh, special business, would you please give reading to eighteen forty-one?
Resolution eighteen forty-one, a resolution congratulating the South Bend Eastside youth Cal Ripken baseball and softball ten U for making it to the World Series placing fourth and receiving the sportsmanship award of the series.
Thank you. And, um, we have our presenters, um, several of our council people, council president, I'm Tim Scott, council person Karen White, council person McBride, and our clerk will join them, I'm Miss Karima Fowler. And we now could go ahead and proceed, state your name and address, and proceed.
Thank you, uh, we'll get the names out of the way, Tim Scott, seven eleven Forest Avenue, South Bend, Indiana.
Karen White, nineteen twelve, Melvorn Way, South Bend.
Karen McBride, four fifteen Broadway Street, South Bend.
Karima Fowler, offices on the fourth floor.
And with the team, come stand up here, boys.
We are champions.
Thank you. So Vice President, uh, Bill, eighteen forty-one, resolution forty-seven thirty-four eighteen, a resolution congratulating the South Bend Eastside youth Cal Ripken baseball and softball ten year olds for making it to the World Series placing fourth.
Alright.
Fourth place and receiving a sportsmanship award for the series, that's awesome. Whereas, South Bend Eastside ten U All-Star team began its tournament in South Bend where they hosted the ten U Cal Ripken State Tournament. They went undefeated in the state tournament, winning five games, giving up only three runs in all the five games. Pretty good, guys. Whereas, after winning the state tournament, they advanced to the Ohio Regional Tournament in St. John's, Indiana. South Bend Eastside went five and one in the regional tournament, beating six teams from Kentucky, Southern Indiana, Wisconsin, and Mattoon, Illinois. In the championship game, six to four to advance to the World Series, and Vincennes, Indiana, played in the national division and...
Whereas, South Bend Eastside competed in the World Series with a record of four and four, competing against teams from Florida, Mississippi, Pennsylvania, Alabama, Kentucky, Washington, Massachusetts, Hawaii, and Pacific Southwest region and the Southeast region. The young men of the Eastside ten U baseball team left it all on the field, finishing fourth in the nation. They were the runner-up in the arm and man bracket and was the one team to receive a distinguished sportsmanship award out of the entire tournament. The award was given to each of the South Bend Eastside players and... Whereas, two players received individual awards for their play in the series. Kamari Austin won the Gold Glove Award for playing centerfield and made the All-Star Defense Team, and Franco Biffle Junior won the Wooden Bat Award and made the All-World Series Team. Only eleven individual awards were given out of over three hundred players. The members of the Eastside baseball team included: Managers, Franco Biffle Senior; coaches, Scott Harford, Tim Kelly, Matt Ruskowski; players, Kamari Austin, Franco Biffle Junior, Bennett Harford, Weston Hope, Peyton Horner, Ryder Place, Ryan Ruskowski, Lucas Short, Pearson Salt, Gavin Taylor, and Jordan Thomas. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the common council as follows. Section one, on behalf of the citizens of South Bend, Indiana, and as elected membership of the South Bend Common Council, we are pleased to publicly congratulate the South Bend Eastside ten U baseball team. Section two, congratulations to the South Bend Eastside ten U baseball team, we wish you more success in the coming years. Signed this tenth day of September in the year two thousand eighteen, the city of South Bend and the county of St. Joseph, Indiana. Section three, this resolution shall take full force and effect from here and after its adoption by the South Bend Count, Common Council and approver, approval by the South Bend mayor. Congratulations.
Alrighty. Do you have any comments from any of the coaches, um, uh, before we turn it over? Would you like to hear from coaches, then, do we like to you to hear from at least captain or one of the players who would like for you to make a speech? I mean, you can...
Franco Biffle, eight thirty-one, South Thirty-Fifth Street. I just wanna thank you guys, I'm very proud of these boys.
Yes.
They've worked very, very hard to achieve, uh, the goal this year, and they accomplished it. Um, I think they grew over the summer, as they were ten, now they are eleven in school year, so it's a great start for the school years, I'm very proud of you boys.
Alright. And one of the players, anybody? Like to... The two of y'all would like to go together?
I know.
Come on, come on. At least two people, there you go, there you go.
Alright, alright.
Come on, come on. Ah, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah. Just, just say your name and, and just say your name and your address and tell us something good.
My name is Wee.
Yes, good.
My name is Jordan Thomas.
Your address?
Oh, fourteen eleven North Side Boulevard.
And tell me something you think, move forward. Tell me something that is good about your team.
They're good.
Ah, ah. Keep it short and simple and clear to the mind, very good. Would like to hear, anybody in the public would like to share a word, uh, with the parent, mayor, come on forward, thank you. Say your name and your address and move forward.
Good evening, Mayor Pete Benetton, with offices on the fourteen floor of this building, uh, just wanna, uh, add to, uh, Clerk Fowler and, uh, the council in, uh, expressing our, our pride in this team. I do think it's probably appropriate, since we all know we don't achieve anything without the support of our families, for these gentlemen to do, lead a round of applause for the, uh, parents and other family members who are here supporting.
All the parents, please stand, all the parents. Could, could all of our parents please stand? All the parents, let's give them a big, there you go.
So with that, gentlemen, I just wanna let you know that your city is proud of you and that we expect the same, uh, leadership traits that you've learned on the field, especially sportsmanship, uh, to make you leaders in the classroom and on the field and eventually for our city. Congratulations again.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public would like to speak in favor? Anybody else? Parent? Community person, anybody else? Okay, alright. Uh, Mr. Bryan, wanna put that on the record? Huh? Alright, moving forward. Uh, moving to our council. Oh, well, you have to do it so officially, anybody wanna speak against this? Okay, done, moving forward, okay. Now I'll be, um, hearing from our councilmen, starting down there with the second, Ms. Preston.
Just wanna thank you for representing the city of South Bend the way you have. It's an amazing achievement to be in the World Series and to, to achieve such a high ranking, number four, it's fantastic. But even more so, to let everybody in this country know that the children of South Bend have great sportsmanship, that you are leaders, and we really appreciate you for putting that on display for all the city. Thank you so much.
Alright.
Congratulations, um, as I listen to the teams and, uh, that you competed against, um, I think some of those teams have weather in their favor, in terms of, uh, their ability to play nearly year-round ball. Um, and, uh, so I know your commitment, when you step on the field, must just go out the roof, and, uh, so, so thank you for working so hard and for this wonderful achievement. Um, I know Eastside has a, a terrific winning tradition, so you represented your part well, uh, so, so great job on that. We're proud of you, your parents are proud of you, the mayors are proud of you, the coaches are proud of you, and, uh, I'm sure you're proud of yourself, and even the little siblings in back as well. So congratulations, keep up the good work.
Alright. Mr. Testa?
Yeah, thank you, uh, I, I've been able to follow your guys' success this year, uh, in part to another proud person, and that's our proud city clerk, uh, Karima Fowler, and, uh, uh, she's proud of you and we all are. Uh, and it's one thing to, to have great athleticism, right, but I think one thing that everybody's noted is the sportsmanship. You guys, uh, just represented our city so well, uh, in that arena, and I'll echo the mayor's sentiments and encourage you to, to keep that up in the classroom and in the hallways at school and, uh, and then in everything that you do throughout the rest of your lives, uh, that's such a valuable, um, trait to have, is sportsmanship, so thank you, guys.
Alright.
No, just say congratulations, especially on the sportsmanship award, really proud of you.
Anybody down there, you all, you all good? Okay, um, I will say that you all played in the Cal Ripken League, many of you all were not, well, most of you, well, none of you all were here when you played. Your parents saw Cal Ripken play. But one thing, anybody know what record he had?
Most games played.
Most games played. And he played for the Baltimore Orioles, I remember watching him play, and he played in two thousand six hundred and thirty-two straight games. And so, that was consistency, that's the person, he stayed there and he always played, no matter what. And we want you to follow that, of strength, of being able to stand in the game and do well, and we appreciate you and we are encouraged by you and your family. Do we have, um, a recommendation from this board?
I'm looking for a favorable adoption.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's okay, good, good. Come on forward. One day you're gonna be up here, I like that, I like that.
Great stuff.
Thank you. Alright, alright. Alright, thank you, thank you.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Time to take a picture.
Excellent, congratulations.
This'll all take a picture. You're lining up here, lining up in the middle.
Everybody going?
Alright. Hey, Mari. Mari. Mari, Mari. I'm gonna take you, I'm gonna be up there. Alright, thank you all. Who's that guy?
Aaron Rodgers is also very good.
I'll second that.
Deshaun Pfizer.
Hey, look, I thought he promised, cause like the setup, like, you know, he gets paid the money, goes down, here's the second.
He did, right, and he, he got out there, he, he, first five plays were beautiful.
I can't say team.
You, you're a Packer fan?
Very good.
I saw the thing.
It was the, in all those, like, they've been playing in Lambo for a hundred years, it's been large, it's never come back.
We'll get new Packer.
Yeah, and one.
It was awesome.
I know they were embarrassed.
I was embarrassed, I was talking to a few. Oh, no. We'll get new ones.
Their line is pretty bad, but, you know, the quarterback's just really good, really good.
Okay. Thank you, Vice President Davis, for that, uh, lead. So, um, we'll move on, there are no reports from city offices, there is no agenda items for committee of the hall, there are no agenda items for bills in the third reading. We will move to resolutions. Uh, Ms. Fowler, would you please give reading to eighteen forty-two?
Eighteen forty-two, a resolution modifying and confirming of the, of the adoption of a declaratory resolution, four four six seven dash fifteen, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as one twenty-two, Conover Street, in South Bend, Indiana, four six six one four, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a six-year rural property tax, uh, abatement for J S K Development Inc., Ireland Hospitality LLC.
Can I make a motion to hear all of these together, all the resolutions together?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, um, process the read 'em all?
Yep.
Uh, Ms. Fowler, if you would read eighteen forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two, please.
Eighteen forty-four, a resolution modifying and confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution, number four four six seven dash fifteen, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as one twenty-one, South St. Wills Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six oh one, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a nine-year rural property tax abatement for J S K Development Inc., Southhold LLC.
Uh, just, I'm sorry, just, uh, point of order, that's eighteen forty-three you just read, which is fine. Oh, forty-four, oh, right.
But you have to read eighteen forty-three.
If you could, read forty-three, please.
I read forty-three already, the first one was number forty-two.
It was forty-two. Yeah, you did read forty-three, you did not read forty-two.
Thank you, okay. Um, eighteen forty-two, a resolution modifying the confirming, confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution, number four four six one dash five, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as one oh six dash one ten, North Main Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six oh one, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a ten-year rural property tax abatement for historic J M S Building LLC.
Alright, thank you.
Um, eighteen forty-five, a resolution modifying and confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution, four four five six dash fifteen, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as one eleven, South St. Wills Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six oh one, as an economic revitalization area for a two-year vacant building tax abatement for J S K Development Inc., Southhold LLC. Eighteen forty-six, a resolution modifying and confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution, number forty-five twelve dash fifteen, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as six thirty-five, South Lafayette Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana, four six six oh one, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a ten-year rural property tax abatement for District One LLC. Eighteen forty-seven, a resolution modifying and confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution, number forty-five ninety-six dash sixteen, designating areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as thirty-seven twenty-two, Foundation Court, South Bend, Indiana, four six six two eight, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Imaginere Enterprise LLC. Eighteen forty-eight, a resolution modifying and confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution, number forty-five ninety-four dash sixteen, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as thirty-seven twenty-two, Foundation Court, South Bend, Indiana, four six six two eight, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a six-year rural property tax abatement for Imaginere Enterprise LLC. Eighteen forty-nine, a resolution modifying and confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution, forty-five oh one dash fifteen, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, known as two eleven, West Washington Street, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a ten-year rural property tax abatement for Hotel located at the Tower at Washington Square LLC. Eighteen fifty, a resolution modifying and confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution, forty-five oh three dash fifteen, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as two eleven, West Washington Street, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a ten-year rural property tax abatement for Parking Garage located at the Tower at Washington Square LLC. Eighteen fifty-one, a resolution modifying and confirming, reconfirming, the adoption of a declaratory resolution, forty-five oh two dash fifteen, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as two eleven, West Washington Street, for an economic revitalization area for purposes of a ten-year rural property tax abatement for Retail Factory located at the Tower at Washington Square LLC. Eighteen fifty-two, a resolution modifying and reconfirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution, number forty-five oh six dash fifteen, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as two eleven, West Washington Street, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a ten-year rural property tax abatement for Apartments located at the Location, Tower at Washington Square LLC.
Thank you, you can breathe now. Is there a president?
Good evening, council, James Mueller, Executive Director of Community Investment, with offices on the fourteen floor of this building. Um, we went into the details of this presentation in the afternoon committee, so I'll try to be brief since we've had, uh, a first round of this already, um, just the key points. Um, the agenda, looking at kind of the overview of, of these abatements, uh, where, what's the economic and process context for why these are coming before you, um, the resolutions themselves and, and some of the project outcomes and reassessments that, um, we've already seen. So, as we just, uh, the clerk just read all the bill descriptions, uh, these are familiar projects, this is the J M S right around the corner, Holiday Inn, south of town, Courtyard Marriott, over by the Chocolate, between the Chocolate Cafe and Century Center, Hall of Fame just north of that, the Sudabrick Airy Ford just south of, uh, Four Winds Field at Kowalski Stadium, um, in, in Imaginere Enterprises over there on Sample, and then, uh, Liberty Power, uh, just around the corner too. Uh, so the, the context for, for these abatements are, the, uh, the number of abatements has, uh, risen, two thousand twenty-ten to two thousand fifteen, the economic conditions have improved and the business activity, uh, as you can see on the graph on the right of building, downtown building permit value by year. building permit value by year, you see that twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, uh, just jumps off the page compared to previous years, and there were plenty of boom and busts, uh, that the city experienced over the last few decades, where Southland didn't see this kind of investment going on in its downtown. So this is really exciting news, um, and these tax abatements have much to do with a lot of this investment downtown. Um, as you can also see, the, the difference in the scale of these projects, the average in twenty-ten was two-point-four million dollars of investment per abatement, twenty-fifteen was four-point-five. So, prices are getting bigger, more investment, and also more complex. Um, finally, there's a process issue that we've learned over time of the, uh, you have the, when we do a tax abatement, uh, there's a designation period that we'll get into in a minute, but, uh, it doesn't, you don't have that assessed value until the assessor actually reassesses the project after the investment, and that's, you have to do that before the designation period ends. Um, here's a summary of the value of, uh, private investment from the tax abatements uh, over the past, uh, seven years, and, um, as you see, twenty-fifteen was a high point, uh, many of these tax abatements come, or all the tax abatements coming before you tonight are the twenty-fifteen and twenty-sixteen timeframe, and so you see, you see a significant jump there in, in what the tax abatement is able to attract in private investment. And similarly, here you see jobs, um, uh, that's announced with that. Um, the, this slide shows the actual, uh, now that some of these, most of these projects have completed, we are getting CF ones with actual job creation, actual investment, um, and so, you see the real property tax abatements, we, we've got, we had eighty-five million dollars of announced, and we've seen a hundred-and-twenty million dollars, uh, personal property tax abatements, a hundred-and-twenty-three versus a hundred-and-forty-four, and then the, uh, the, that's, I'm sorry, that's in salaries, then the investment is right now a little low because a couple of the projects haven't completed, as we'll get into in a minute. Um, also, something to note on this slide is that the assessed value that we projected was a little higher than, than what we've seen in the CF one so far, but that's also, as we'll see in a moment, the full assessment, the assessor does a reassessment at January one every year, so there's partial assessments, until you get the full assessment onto the book, we won't see that, and there's a couple of cases that illustrate this for you. Um, the arrows can come through here, but, uh, the tax abatement, uh, timeline from a process standpoint, a petitioner submits, uh, fills out a petition packet and SB one form, uh, as required by municipal code, uh, the Department of Community Investment analyzes this, uh, petition and brings it before counsel to, uh, receive an up or down vote. Uh, for the approval process in the council portion, there's a designating resolution followed by confirming resolution, and then a memorandum of agreement is, uh, forged between the part, between the city and the recipient. Um, then the project goes on, the investment and the construction, or whatever else was agreed to in the MOA, uh, commences, and then on the back end, there's reporting, uh, with CF one forms, there's the reassessment from the assessor in Form eleven, um, and then D C I does its annual, uh, tax abatement report. Um, the length of abatements, personal are limited to five years, real, uh, property tax abatements, three to ten, uh, depending on the project, vacant two, um, and then the designation period can be two or more years, the ones before you, all of them were two years originally, except for the Hall of Fame one, which was three originally. And, uh, this timeline doesn't quite show up, um, there were arrows before, but, uh, the top, if the arrow was still there, you would see, uh, what the calendar, uh, relevant pieces of the calendar for the tax abatement process, so on January first is the effective reassessed value for that tax year, um, the assessor doesn't go around the entire city and reassess things on day one of the year, but that's when they have to estimate, uh, the assessed value being, uh, valid for that year. Um, in May, May fifteenth, CF one forms are due, um, June, a month later, the, our annual tax abatement report to counsel is due, um, and then between July and the fall, the assessor provides the reassessment based off the January first value, um, to the recipient, uh, on the Form eleven. So below you see, uh, if you got, if you gave a designation period for a tax abatement of two years, as we've done commonly, um, and you have a common eighteen, eighteen-month project, you assume there's no delays, it goes on exactly as planned, if you granted the tax abatement in October, uh, in the first, on the top line there, that dot in the upper right, um, there'd be a partial assessed value that following January first, probably not much, given a couple months of construction, and the project continues all the way through that year, there's a partial reassessed value based off of that, uh, construction that year, uh, January first, project concludes on time, eighteen months in April, and then, uh, and that's well before the October two-year designation period ends. They won't get their full assessed value on the project until that following January first, they won't receive the, um, Form eleven until July to September of that year, saying they won't actually pay this or fill it out on their, on their form until the year after that. Um, so this is a summary of the resolutions in terms of what were the new designated, proposed designation period, so as I mentioned before, they were all two, two years before, except the Hall of Fame, which was three, now they're proposed to be, what you see there on the far right column, um, four years for all of them with the exception of Imaginereering, which is three years, the personal and, uh, real property tax abatements, and then the two pieces of the Liberty Tower that have not completed, uh, proposing to go to five years as they hope to complete next year. Um, and here is the summary of the project outcomes, the four columns on the right show what was committed to, and so the second two columns, the announced amount, were what were, uh, committed to in the MOAs, and then the two columns to the left of that are what we've seen so far. Um, one thing to note is that the, uh, job commitments are required to be fulfilled over the length of the, the tax abatement, not necessarily right when the tax abatement starts. Um, and then the, uh, here is the, the status of where their assessed value, um, is twenty-eighteen to eight twenty-nineteen versus the year before of these projects, and what the status of their Form eleven is. Um, the other thing important to note is that we are not asking for an extension of the tax abatement length itself, we're not changing any other, other terms of the abatement, what we're doing here is just allowing the projects to, um, qualify for the tax abatement we already agreed to, based off the designation period, and getting it done and reassessed in time to receive those benefits. And with that, that be done.
Are there any questions of the presenter, Vice President Davis? Oh, before you go, I'm sorry, I was remiss, uh, in not asking for a committee report on all these eleven bills.
Community Investment sends out at least four in favor, but...
Thank you, uh, I apologize for that. Vice President Davis?
Question, Steve. Um, well, my biggest concern is that it seems like we're gonna have to revamp our abatement policies because of the fact that, um, that argument can be utilized throughout many of the abatements that we've had, um, based on the issue of when they are actually approved here, when, um, they get going, you know, depending on what is going on in terms of the different project that happens, and so, the timeframe of, uh, like, you know, your calendar, you said there, could literally impact a lot where it could start a trend, you see this, where many people, businesses who already currently have abatements, um, will now come back to us to do likewise?
Uh, there's two parts to that question, I think in committee, uh, some of your colleagues recommended that we, now that we have a better understanding of the process, that we set the designation period to be more amenable to the actual process, so that we don't have, one, projects that stay on schedule, um, don't have to come back for these types of changes. Um, there are things, and I think the, the Liberty Tower is a perfect example of one where projects face delays for any number of reasons, um, this, the Liberty Tower has already invested ten, over ten million dollars more than they promised for doing all four components, but they've only completed two of the components, and so, there are, there's inevitabilities in complicated projects, or any development project really, that, um, they may need more time to complete the project and get reassessed, uh, within a designation period. So those will likely always exist to some extent, but this number, in the future, as we catch up and we fix this designation period issue, we hope to see fewer.
Is there any way that we could fix this, I know this is an interesting situation tonight, but, um, I would rather us, um, fix this, tie it to us having people attached to this, or businesses attached to it, you know, where we just have a meeting to just review our abatements, to sit back and look at these kind of issues, and not tie them into a vote, and that's, that's been my biggest concern, um, when the issue of making those changes are now tied to the different eleven businesses out here, so we don't want to support, or we need more further information how to put this all together, and to just send this on through with a vote, is my concern, how do you, how do you deal with the issue of not quote-unquote hiring them, but at the same time not setting the precedent where other people coming behind you, say, well, you did it for them, you did it for them, you did it for them, well, no, we've changed it since then, and to do it for eleven people, even though they've done all that, so many other businesses can, can argue the case that they've done better, they've, they've added more, they've done this, they've done that, that's a serious concern.
Yeah, I mean, so, this, the designation period is not required in statute, so there's nothing to amend outside of the specific tax abatement, um, resolutions with individual tax abatements, so we couldn't amend anything in the code, um, to do that blanket, um, I think, like we said, we're adopting policy going forward that's more amenable to the process, um...
And that's what I'm saying to you, can we adopt the policy with, and be connected in the coming time, with that, on a night where we just do strictly policy and not attach a business to it, because that's where I feel my concern is. Um, I don't have a problem with making adjustments for a policy, but I have a problem in making all those connected with businesses and policy all in saying, you know, we get a packet on Thursday, and you see all these things, people sending us emails like crazy, saying what's going on here, and so, that creates the fact that we can't come back and justify what's going on because we don't have a policy for that, we're just making this outside of that, and that's where my concern is.
Okay. Yeah, we, we're just trying to adapt our imperfect policy, our informal policy from before, but we're happy to formalize the policy going forward.
And last part of it, to our attorney, what kind of a policy do you foresee us putting something together, what, to, to address this kind of thing, what, what's your...
I think that's a, uh, a function of D C I to come up with their own internal policy to set a designated period that is reasonable, given the scope of the projects that are before us on tax abatements. Um, they've been overly optimistic so far in, in setting these designated periods, hoping that everything would be completed and reassessed within two years, when reality, either through delays or delays in, in, in construction, or delays in reassessment, those overly optimistic designation periods just don't pan out. This doesn't change any economic effects.
I understand that.
Yeah, it's just, they need to become more realistic with the larger redevelopment projects that are coming before the council.
Well, I think that's where we get a lot of our criticism for, is the process, now you're saying that it doesn't need to have a code change, it needs to have...
No, there's no policy.
It needs to have a policy change that comes, and we don't approve that policy, that's a policy within the department, or what's it?
That's correct, yeah.
So that has nothing to do with it, so, therefore, they could have already changed that policy before they came here to address that issue, is that correct, Ben?
They still have to go by extension. Not it, I mean, it wasn't their policy at the time you passed the tax abatements in twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen.
Granted, but could they have changed that policy prior, in the sense that all the policy is based in the executive recs, could they have changed that, or does that have to come back before us?
They, they can change the policy at any time they want to, but because these already have the designated, uh, time periods, they have to come back and be broken through by the council.
Right, by state statute.
Could I add something to the policy discussion?
So, one quick thing on that, so, that's my concern with all those who are, all the abatements that are currently out, everybody's abatement that's currently out there, and, um, if, they then have to all come back through us.
Only the abatements that have not been completed and reassessed within that original designation period, then I, I assume that you've caught as many of those as you could and, and proceeded those.
So, so you're saying then there's, there's no more of those coming before us?
There are. There could be, I mean, there could be project delays too that cause it as well.
Vice President Davis, just let me interject just real quick, during committee, we, we did talk about this, and we talked about, uh, policy, uh, procedure looking to them to expand this, uh, one note that I brought up is like, since I've been on council in seven years, we've had four different, uh, directors of D C I, so, um, I think what they're doing is, is being proactive to try to understand the policy and, and correct that, and we're, we're catching, they're catching up to it right now. Now, to me, you can set a policy, and there's gonna be a basic standard, what you're concerned with, and I agree with that, um, and I'll get you to Gavin, then, you're gonna have to look at it case-by-case basis, because there's some projects that might go through completely fine, uh, everything's done within, uh, the allotted time, everything's by the book, uh, Form eleven, everything is, is, is done, everything's fine, so, we might have to look at these case-by-case going forward, but as new ones come up, they're gonna be able to, uh, expand to the proper policy, Gavin, just a quick thing, I'll come back to that.
And I, I agree with Vice President Davis, and, and, right, any sort of policy changes, you know, in the next month or two, uh, you know, D C I could come before counsel and just, you know, state, hey, this is the new policy moving forward, I think that'd be really beneficial.
Oh, one other point, i-if they are on the books, and they've already been voted upon, upon by this body, by state statute, they have to come back to us, and we vote on any of those changes like we're gonna do tonight, so, but you're right.
Well, another thing is, one of the things on that, and, and it's kind of a, um, interesting kind of a catch, you want everything to be caught up with all eleven of them coming real quick in one shot, but then you bring out another good point, um, and that was, how do you establish a case-by-case basis when all eleven of them are sitting out here, and we basically don't vote on one, either it's gonna be voted up or voted down, where we don't really have the time, I mean, we don't have the time this afternoon, or to actually go through each eleven, and tell, okay, that one had that situation, okay, this one had that situation, okay, we yes, yes on that one, no on that one, oh, come back on that one, I mean, we, we just sound like a boom, boom, that's where my concern is, you see my point?
Okay, yeah, no, no.
Okay, I'm up, please.
Any other questions, Joe Brown?
So, just, uh, really quickly, I wanna, uh, make sure, so, um, one or two projects actually had no investment, uh, per your chart, and actually per the, for the, um, uh, what was submitted, um, could you clarify what the actual investment going forward is, if we were going to be granting, uh, that particular...
The extension?
Yeah, the extensions.
And before you start, James, sorry, um, this, these resolutions are brought forth by, uh, D C I, um, the stakeholders with each one of these properties are here, and they're here for support data, uh, to D C I's resolution, so if anybody has any questions for them, we'll bring them up, it's a little different than most resolutions where they are, uh, petitioner, they are not in this case, so, James, go ahead.
Sure, so, I mean, starting with the Liberty Towers, we mentioned before, the original investment across all four pieces was roughly thirty million dollars, they've already invested that, uh, it says thirty-eight-point-five million dollars there, um, for the hotel and garage components, and they're estimating an additional fifteen, uh, additional dollars, but they've already matched their commitment, uh, toward investment with just the first two parts for the whole case, and they were linked in that regard.
Okay, so, I'll be very specific, then, the Imaginereering Enterprises.
Right, and that they're looking to commit their...
So, I guess, yes, I, I think it would be instructive to us as counsel, we are looking to, um, extend this, so with regard to that particular project, um, I think you used the coalfield, didn't hit the marks, right, I mean, they hit other marks, and I get that, but going forward, what is going to be the specific level investment, and, uh, perhaps the individuals could address that better, but...
Sure.
That's a conversation your office has had, so I'd just like, yeah, to make sure that's part of the record.
Yeah, for Imaginereering, it's not changing the terms of, of the abatement at all, it's just changing the designation period, that's the only chance they're seeking.
Okay, and then, um, with regard to, uh, precedent issues, what, um, and sort of, um, a full understanding of additional, um, petitioners coming before us, what is your of additional petitioners coming before us, what is your sense? This is 11, we have already done four or five previous to that, what is your sense? We're at 11 today, what are we looking at, maybe perhaps before the end of the year or even in 2019?
Sure, so I mean, this takes care of those from 2015, 2016. We've tried to figure out a way forward where we don't have these moving forward, and that's extending the designation period. So there is a time in between, you know, 2017 and 2018, we've reached out to folks, but, you know, people are always optimistic that they don't need to make a change when there's, when the deadline's not there yet, so there's probably a few more that may come. Or there's, there are actual deadlines that developments encounter, or delays that they actually encounter that, as a, I mean, I can provide the administration policy and philosophy for that, and I think the council shares that policy, but, I mean, you look at the results of all these abatements, that growth of downtown investment, these projects wouldn't happen without the incentives, they just wouldn't happen, we wouldn't have any of that investment. So that huge growth, like I said in the remarks before, you know, booms and busts have come and gone, and South Bend hasn't seen that level of investment. And so from the administration perspective, as long as they're meeting their investment and their, you know, their investment targets, their other economic, you know, their other commitments, you know, substantial commitments, if a project gets delayed, I mean, so for example, Liberty Tower, they've already put, you know, almost $10 million more than they committed originally, and they're now promising to commit another $15 million. We'll do that every day of the week, I mean, that's a great thing for the city. And I think one of the misinformation out there about tax abatements are, it's only on the increase of revenue, so it's really more appropriately to be called tax phase-ins, because you're not losing any revenue. So for these projects, they wouldn't have happened, you're not, you wouldn't be abating anything because there's nothing that would have been generated. So we're losing zero and we're adding over time, so this is great for the city. So from the administration viewpoint, I think council over time has demonstrated they believe in this too, is that these are great for the community and these are wins.
And I do, I think your presentation this afternoon and discussion this afternoon, I think went a long way, as well as the individual petitioners and what they expressed in terms, those are instructive when they talk about the delays that they've encountered. I mean, I think that helps all of us, and it's not just, you know, the folks that are sitting up here, it's the folks whom we represent, they need to understand and want to understand, you know, these issues and what are some of the challenges. And I think it's very helpful. So I thank you for the presentation, I appreciate the earlier discussions on this, I look forward, I think, or I look forward in, I would be inclined toward Councilmember Furlick's timetable, that we actually, within the next month, streamline, figure out where the information gaps are, not just the assessor's office, because I think the forms are being sent out per law on that, and if we're not getting forms, then they should be being returned back to the assessor's office, you know, there's something between the postal office and the assessor's mailing of that, but there's additional opportunities, right, for those Form 11s. And then I guess I also would like to know where there's any wiggle room within the annual assessment process, and what information can we feed into this, all, you know, this really critical January 1 date? You know, whether it's the building plans, the investments to date, so that we're, you know, as the project is, is being partially completed, fully completed, we've got a better, you know, understanding of that, and it's actually being reflected in the paperwork. So I, that's kind of my thing, I'm really eager to look at the change, not only the policy, but the process that mitigates, and I appreciate the work that you and your counterparts have done for 2015, 2016, and I think it is important in terms of, I don't want to just jump reflexively to a core year, because I think there is something about the two years. So, you know, that conversation and sort of what, you know, the give and take on that, I think, would be an interesting one to be a part of.
Councilman Tushka.
Yes, so just real quick, thank you, first of all, for clarifying, you made a point about the abatement being on the increase. Do you have, there's some slides from the presentation that you did back in December, do you have that? There's like a graphic, a really simple graphic, that I think is helpful.
Graphic from December, I don't know that we have the graphic, yeah.
Okay.
Just these slides.
Okay, anyway, I use, I will use that graphic moving forward when talking about tax abatements with our residents, I think it's really...
I think that one was on TIFF, but it's similar.
Or similar, yeah, sorry, you're right, you're right. But similar, right, so I mean, I think you can use it in both situations.
Yeah.
But, so thank you for that information. One other clarifying point, the slide that you had, and it talks about the designation period, the modified designation period, and you don't have to flip back to it.
Seven of them.
So it's like 4, 4, 3, 5, those are total, right? So if there's two years already lapsed, then we're talking three more years on the five-year ones.
Right, exactly. So two years for those first one.
Two additional years, right.
Only one on the whole, because it was three, it was the one outlier, it was a three-year originally, and then the five-year, three years addition.
I just wanted to make that, I'd like to make that point earlier in committee, and didn't, so thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. We're not the only city here in the state of Indiana that uses abatements. What have been best practices that you have blamed and gathered from other cities when they have had these situations, Indianapolis, other places? What have been some of your study? How do they handle this kind of a matter?
We can study, we can certainly look into more, I mean, there are different markets, so Indianapolis has a different market structure than we do. You know, you could look at more comparable cities and see what they do. I mean, we know what Mishawaka does, for example, in December's presentation, we looked through a couple cases, you know, they're big development over there on the riverfront by Beaver Park. We can bring that back up and show you the examples again.
When I say, and I say, what do they do, what do they do when they have these kind of challenges, or these kind of things? Not in terms of just the actual abatements, in terms of what their benefits have been to the city, but when they have these kind of gaps or situations in their own policies, what has been their best practices to be able to remedy them?
I mean, legally, we have to amend the resolutions if that's what's in the resolutions, so whether they started out with a longer designation period originally, we can look at different bases, but if, once we start, once we got started with the two-year, if that wasn't working for us, we'd have to come back through this mechanism.
But at this present time, did you, let me phrase this question, did you all take a look at any of the other cities in the state of Indiana to see what they did to handle these kind of best practices when it came to this kind of a crisis?
We have not, the conference has looked at it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Just one more thing, I believe we talked about this in committee briefly, but do you have plans, or can we be a little bit more proactive in the assessment of these properties, right? So can your office work more directly with the county assessor's office to make sure that these assessments are happening on a priority basis, right? Because we've abated, because we have this phase-in in place, can we make sure that we're doing those more quickly? I guess, or suggestion, whatever it is.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, there's two key places where we think we could, we could help work with the assessor's office from our end. One is making sure all these properties that have tax abatements are flagged, that could be as simple as just forwarding the annual tax payment report and making sure they're, they have that in their records. The second piece is if we're able to get them some sort of construction cost estimates from either the building design or what have you, so they have some basis to work off of before having to reinvent the wheel.
Well, in that case, what responsibility do we put it on the companies themselves to keep up with their own record keeping when it comes down to this kind of situation?
To the recipients?
Uh-huh.
Well, they require...
Because to get an abatement, well, I mean, they're doing a great job in a lot of things, but it's also a benefit, it also is a caviar kind of thing, and so therefore, since you get those kind of things, there is an extra responsibility to be able to keep that. So if you're in an honest, kind of, honest society or you have a high school, you have certain benefits that you have to be more responsible for that. So what's that, what's that? I mean, not just putting all the pressure on the assessor, because I think that we can always put a lot of pressure on the assessor and blame everything there, but I also believe that there's a role for us and there's a role for those who are getting the abatements.
Right, our first and foremost thing we're concerned about with these tax abatements are, are they making the investment in our community, and are they creating the jobs that they promised? Second, we help remind them that they have these paperwork to fill out every year, so we send out reminders, and for the most part, the tax recipients remember to fill those out. So those are their requirements, whatever's in the memorandum of agreement and the commitments of investment, jobs, salaries, and then doing their annual paperwork to document that.
Anything else? Any questions or just questions right now for any of the stakeholders involved with this? Seeing none, I will open up to the public, public, anyone who's wishing to speak in favor of any of the 11 resolutions before us, 1842, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against, please come to the podium. You have five minutes total.
My name is Steve Castle, 402 Kennedy Drive. I think there is a need for change in policy on the abatements, I've certainly discussed that with the council, especially since in reviewing it, the council and the city, the mayor gave out $36 million in abatements in 2017, $25 million abatements in 2016, and from 2011 to 2017, $117 million in abatements. I think it's excessive, and I think there need to be tighter parameters, especially when I look at many of them created no jobs or less than 10 jobs. So I think, as Councilwoman Davis said, it's a caviar thing, but I think it needs to come with tighter parameters.
In this case, are they, anything specific to any one of the resolutions?
You did discuss policy, I did notice in the packet there's no ROI and no dollar amounts, I thought that would have been helpful for the citizens, and on the best practice, it is best practice to, other cities either give TIF or abatement, but not both. So I would hope that you would do that, and I also wanted to bring to your attention, there are negative numbers on the time left on some of the reports, I don't know if they're getting the abatement beyond what was voted by council, I don't know, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. There's also figures missing in the 2017 report, so it would be great to have the complete data to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak against?
Jason Beniki-Kurtlow, 3822 West Ford Street. Particularly when it comes to the JSK development ones, you know, it's one thing for them to build a couple hotels, it's nice. When we gave them the parking lot for a dollar, they had agreed to buy the Hall of Fame for something around 1.5, 1.6 million dollars, if I recall correctly. But they hadn't done their due diligence on making sure that they could use the Hall of Fame in the way that they intended. So when that didn't work out, we still allowed them the tax abatement, but now we backed the price of, purchase price of the Hall of Fame off over a million dollars out of the taxpayers' pocket. So now not only have we given them the property to build the hotel, the tax abatement for the property, and now we've negotiated down a million dollars worth of the price, purchase price. When we have to keep changing the parameters to match them, why should we continue to give them these excessive abatements? And in terms of the Liberty Tower, it's great to say that they're going to invest all this extra money, but he's not investing that money, because I know some of the insiders on that project, because the project's going great in Gamebusters. From an insider's perspective, he's going to lose money on that project, which means he's less likely to do another project. So it's great to say, hey, it's $53 million and it's all this extra money, but it's not because the project's going well, it's because the project's not going well. It's because it's behind schedule, it's because they found more problems than they anticipated. It's not going to be a profitable project, it's not going to reflect well for future proj, projects downtown. And of course, yes, the tax abatements are only on new dollars, but again, when you look at the Liberty Tower project, they made sure to empty the Chase Tower building before seeking the abatement. So when you're seeking it, taking building that was once relatively full, then half-full, then emptying it completely before seeing an abatement, you've pushed down that appraised value very far, and now you're seeking an abatement on what you again hope to be at least half-full now, and eventually a relatively full building again. So yeah, you're only taking an abatement on these phased-in things with that project, but you've depressed the value to start it, so you're kind of getting, you know, giving yourself an unfair starting advantage and doing it at the taxpayer's expense. So that's, those were the ones I would specifically speak against. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jesse Davis, P.O., Box 10, 205, South Bend, Indiana. We've talked about these abatements many times, and prior to offering any abatements at any given time, we had development. We're coming to a fiscal cliff that you keep talking about because of lack of tax dollars. But you don't want to give the tax dollars away, and not only are we giving the abatements, we're giving them tax dollars for the projects. Some of these projects, we've seen a 30% or larger investment of tax dollars into the projects, and you're saying the projects aren't going to happen if we don't give the abatements. Projects happened prior to abatements being there, projects happened prior to us giving all the candy and the TIF dollars away, so I think we need to really be conscious about what we're doing with these abatements and how steadily they've climbed. They can show all the graphs up here they want about, oh, this is investment, but we can show you graphs where these abatements have had a steady incline as well. Then you look at A.J. Wright Building, we put a lot of money into that place, we gave tax abatements, guess what, they bailed. They didn't have to pay anything, and we sold the place for pennies on the dollar, so we never regained anything back. That's happening over and over and over again. So if we continue to keep voting these through, but then you want to sit up there and vote to reduce money for neighborhood funds and neighborhood projects, man, that's just wrong, that's not what we elected you folks to do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll turn it back to, actually rebuttal for Mr. Mueller, you have five minutes? Is there anything you'd like to say?
I'll be brief, just to remind people that we're not talking about the loss of any tax revenues, like the Liberty Tower, perfect example, even the Hall of Fame. Hall of Fame, if this development was going to happen, we'd have something in there already. You know, it's, these are difficult things to get work, developments are difficult, our market's still not quite there. One of the, one of the folks mentioned that, you know, there may be issues with penciling out. This really shows the need for the incentives in our market where, you know, you're not going to see this level of investment unless things are able to pencil out. So incentives help fill that gap, you can do it with tax abatements, you can do it with TIF, you can do it with a combination. We're trying to move more toward using tax abatements because we would like to use TIF for other investments like parks, neighborhood plan implementation, in public works capital. But again, Liberty Tower, for it is a good case, we'd either be tearing it down, spending TIF dollars to demolish that building, or it would be falling apart in the middle of our downtown if it weren't for finding a developer who was willing to take the risk and put tens of millions of dollars into it, and then asking for tax phase-in, because that's the more appropriate way to characterize this incentive, is that the tax, as the investment goes into it, the new tax, it's only on the new part, it stays in. So this is, I think we'll just let the results speak for themselves, and I hope that we can continue this progress for the city.
Thank you. Turn it back to council.
I'm going to make a motion, but I just want to say that I appreciate the broader scope of the conversation, right? And it's okay to talk about the tax abatements as a whole, but just want to remind council and also the public that what we're talking about right now is just extending the designation period, right? We're not really talking about amending, actually, we're not talking about amending these really at all, except for just extending that period so it can keep up with the lag in assessment. So with that, I'll make a favorable, oh, I'm sorry, I think we have to go one by one.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I'll make a favorable recommendation for 1842.
Second.
Ms. Fowler, roll call.
1842, Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Burden?
Aye.
Councilmember Tushka?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, 1843, is there...
Make a motion to adopt 1843.
Aye.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Burden?
Aye.
Councilmember Tushka?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
1844, please.
Make a motion to adopt 1844.
Aye. Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McRae?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion to adopt 1845.
Second.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McRae?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. 1846?
Motion to adopt 1846.
Second. Vice President Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember McRae?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion to adopt 1847.
Second.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McRae?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Nay.
Councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Nay.
President Scott?
Aye.
Motion to adopt, sorry, motion to adopt 1848.
Second.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McRae?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Nay.
Councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Motion to adopt 1849.
Second.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McRae?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion to adopt 1850.
Second.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember McRae?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
1851?
Motion to adopt 1851.
Second.
I'm tired.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McRae?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion to adopt 1852.
Second.
Councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McRae?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you.
We covered them all.
We covered them all. First readings, Ms. Fowler, 4218, would you please give first reading 4218?
4218, first reading on ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriate additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in 2018 of $672,857 from economic development state grant 210, $1 million from BCI grant fund 212, $5,000 from gift donation request fund 217, $669,700 from liability insurance premium reserve 226, minus $960,000 from the low it 2016 special distribution fund number 257, $337, well, minus $337, $632 from the local Roman Bridge Grant Fund number 265, $28,100 from the economic revenue bond 281, $55,000 from the Kovaletzky Stadium Capital number 401, minus $124,050 from UDAG number 410, $28,100 from the redevelopment general fund number 433, and $650 from the Smart Streets debt service fund number 756.
I make a motion that this bill, Bill 42-18, be sent to personnel and finance committee for committee meeting, second reading, and public hearing on September the 24th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 4318, please.
4318, first reading on ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $4,205,000 to the city of South Bend, Indiana Economic Development Revenue Bonds Series 2018, Potawatomi Zoo Project, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Make a motion that this bill be sent to personnel and finance committee for committee meeting, second reading, and public hearing for September the 24th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Is there any unfinished business?
Yes. I would like to thank you, Mr. President, for getting back with me regarding the possible upcoming letter that, in terms of merging people, the county commission, the commissioners, city council, the people over at NCT Airport, so we can all talk about the upcoming possible changes in the South Shore. And so I appreciate you, I'm doing that, and looking forward to your follow-up on that.
Yep, efforting, and not the most easiest thing to do.
No, it's not.
Have many people together. But I will give you an update, hopefully later this week. Anything else on unfinished business? Nope? Any new business?
Shout out to our chief of staff again. Had a crash situation in the district, and she jumped on that really quick. I sent her an email, and she cleared that matter up really quick, so people were very grateful for you, so thank you.
Recognize Laurel Sullivan in the crowd?
Thank you.
Any other new business? Seeing none, we'll move to privilege of the floor. This is where citizens have the right to come and talk to the self-income council. They're given three minutes each. Total time period for this is 30 minutes total. You cannot talk about anything on the agenda tonight, and any actions will be turned over to a proper committee or administration. So, name and address, go.
San Antonio Brown, 222 East, New Bern, uh, East, New Bern.
Not west.
Okay. In the city of South Bend. I'm going to touch on a very difficult subject. The crash from Western Avenue, with a police officer that protected us. Also, I'm thinking about the family, I'm thinking about the city as a whole, and I want this seriously, all of the stakeholders involved in this. We got to get this right. A family is going to mourn for a long time. There's nothing we can do about it, human nature. But what we can do, to make sure something like this don't happen again, I mean, action doesn't happen every day, but with all the components, all the factors, there's something we can do. Well, we can protect the citizens, take the police officer, when they on call to protect us, but we got to get it right. We got to get faith that our leaders are making a sound decision for this guy. He paid for the horrors. The family going to breathe for a long, long time, but it's going to help the process if we get this right. There should be no holding back, nothing to hide, please, please, when that decision come down, don't divide our citizens. Hispanic difference, please. Uh, white against black, or white against this, don't do that. And you people, relax, and I'm serious with my heart, if you have to write letters, that everybody in our midst got a station here, making a sound decision, please, don't tear our city out, please don't. I'm begging.
Thanks, sir. Next name and address.
Jesse Davis, P.O. Box 10, 125, South Bend, Indiana. Kind of on the same note as Sam was talking about, I was wondering if maybe you guys could look into and get some input on traffic statistics, crashes, things of that nature on these streets that we have made all these changes to. I get beat up pretty bad on the internet, you know, because of comments that are made. We had an 11-year-old boy that died on South Michigan Street. Our mayor came out and said, oh, well, they should have been in a crosswalk, you know, if they weren't out of the crosswalk, and it wasn't foggy, they wouldn't have got hit. Well, that happened within days of them changing that street to two-way traffic. These young children were used to looking one direction before they ran across the street. They also had a crosswalk and a traffic light there prior to that accident that was removed by our city officials, which was then replaced right away. Then we have a lady, we've got police officers traveling 90, 95 miles an hour down a road that used to be two lanes, now it shrunk down to a single lane each direction with bump outs and so forth. So there's literally less room for that officer or for an individual to maneuver and try to avoid an accident. So anybody that wants to say Smart Streets hasn't contributed to any of these things is dead wrong, dead wrong. We've got a young lady that lost her life, her children are now with her sister. We have a prosecutor that everybody's saying, hey, look, you should have took care of this. He sent it to a grand jury, came back, they're not happy with that result. Now we're sending it off to our public board of safety. We've asked you guys for our own board, three years, because we have zero faith in that public board of safety that's appointed by our mayor. Zero faith. We saw what they did with other cases, where people were beat up by cops, and so on and so forth. We don't have faith that they're going to make any better decision than that grand jury made. So, again, we want a board for the people that's compiled of people, not somebody that's handpicked by the mayor, who can oversee these things and make sure that this is a fair process. We don't have faith in that board of public safety at all, and y'all know that. So I hope they get this one right. If they don't, like Sam said, this community could be a mess.
Thank you. Next name and address.
Jason Benicki-Critchlow, 38, 22 West Ford Street. Normally, I love to speak extemporaneously in front of you guys, off the top of my head, but today, because of what I want to speak about, this is so important, I decided to write it down, to make sure I didn't miss a beat. On July 20th, this community suffered in an unmentionable tragedy involving a crash between Erica Flores and a police officer, South Bend Officer Gorney, which resulted in the death of Erica Flores. I don't need to rehash any of the effects of this tragedy, but I will ask for justice for the family and equal treatment under the law for our law enforcement officers, the same as any other citizen would receive. While Indiana law allows for the use of grand juries, it is indeed a very rare step to be used, especially when it is very clear that South Bend PD policies and Indiana state law was broken in this incident. So I'm calling on this council to draft and pass a resolution, calling on our prosecuting attorney, Ken Conner, to step aside and turn this case and investigation over to a special prosecutor in regards to this fatal crash. As any investigation into a police officer calls for complete and total transparency, however, the prosecutor instead chose to use a grand jury where every bit of evidence and testimony is then sealed and kept from, from every citizen, and it just absolutely bypasses the transparency that's required in a case like this. And this will require prosecutor, attorney instead, calls into question his objectivity into this case, and makes it impossible for the Flores family to perceive that they've received the justice that they deserve. And as I, somebody who worked at the jail for years, I used to tell new people that just the appearance of impropriety is impropriety of itself. So the minute that this appears impartial, that our prosecutor is instead favoring our police officers over our citizens, that's time to step aside and let a special prosecutor handle that. So I'm calling on you guys to use the political courage necessary to go after a Democrat in a democratic city, to say, look, you know, you are doing a big thing badly. Step aside, let a special prosecutor handle it. That way then, there's no saying, hey, you were covering for your cops, or you were covering for somebody new, because a special prosecutor won't have those ties. You know, it's easy when we want to send a resolution to Washington DC to Donald Trump and Mike Pence.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
But let's send a message to our community that as a council, we stand behind all of our citizens and believe in equal justice for everybody, and pass a resolution calling on Ken Conner to step aside in this case.
Thank you. Next name and address.
Steve Castle, 402 Kennedy Drive. I'm given so little time to speak most of the time, that I don't get to say something good. I have to address the issue, and it always seems pretty negative, but I have time constraints. So I want to say a special shout-out to the finance department. They did a beautiful job on the caper and the adopted budget book. They're easy to read. I appreciate that they took my suggestion and they added a glossary so that citizens can understand the terms that they're talking about, because they have a different language than the rest of us, and help us understand that. So the city employees are really nice, hard-working people. I've had good experiences with them in the community. People say, why do you say "the" council or "the mayor"? I say that because it's not personal. I'm addressing the duty of a job. It's nothing personal. So I make it general so that I'm not singling anyone out. When I say "the council," it's meant as how you are performing your jobs, not as a personal offense. So just to say, I have a lot of positive things to say, but I rarely have time to say them. So just wanted to take this time to say that. I know Graham Getzinger is, but he does a great job with the technology. And Joe Molnar is doing a great job with the tree planting. I always like to see eco-friendly things going on in the city, and I'm hoping that the women and minority committee will flourish and get more people into, into doing business in South Bend. So I do have positive things to say, but in three minutes, this doesn't happen. So this is my night to say thanks to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate it. Next name and address.
And Joe Mulner is doing a great job with the tree planting. I always like to see eco-friendly things going on in the city, and I'm hoping that the women and minority committee will flourish and get more people into it, into doing business in South Bend. So I do have positive things to say, but in three minutes, this doesn't happen. So this is my name to say thanks to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, sue. Appreciate it. Next name and address.
Hope there's more bear fans here, I'm sorry.
I am, take your hat, get out. Name and address, sir.
Lot good shot. 837 South 24th, South Bend, Indiana, right next to Pononami. I come here tonight, and I have asked, after I heard the last speaker praise the staff, Graham, and Mulner, and the young lady over there, Karema, what an outstanding group. If you can give one to each of the council members, an invitation along with Karema and the attorney, I couldn't be any more excited. And yes, I did something while everybody was speaking, I actually wrote the invitations, and you'll see in yellow, a little heart in the back, and that's number 12. And what's number 12 is exactly where the stone is. And you say, what stone? It's the stone honoring my father.